Welcome to Annette on Life, Liberty and Happiness. A podcast where we talk about the Constitution, politics, history, and pretty much anything else I want to talk about. This podcast can be found on Apple. I always want to say iTunes, but it's Apple Podcasts now. Or yeah, Amazon Music, Stitcher, Spotify, anywhere else you can think of to find your podcasts. Also, look for us on YouTube. You just go to YouTube and type in Annette Talks and you'll find it there. And if you subscribe right now on YouTube, you can, you'll be entered to win a 72-hour kit, which I talked about on a previous podcast. So go listen. All right, and so as I started a few episodes ago, I'm going to do a Constitution Minute now. And since I'm going to be talking with school board candidates, I decided I would talk about federalism. And I don't know if many people realize that we live in a federal system, which means that the power is divided between the national government and the states and cities and counties. Should be like a layer cake where the federal government's power is here, states down here and not mixed. Unfortunately, it's become more like a marble cake and there's cake all the way through both layers. But the way it's set up, you won't find the word federal or federalism in the Constitution, but the way it's set up is that the national government has enumerated powers. Anything beyond that is reserved to the states by the 10th Amendment. One of the powers that is not reserved to the national government is education. And so as such, it's left to the states. And I think that having a federal DEA or Department of Education is actually unconstitutional. We shouldn't have it. I think all the decisions for this education should be left at the state, local, county, city level. And with schools, usually we're talking about a district that's smaller than the school, county, or city. And so that leads me right into today's topic. And I live in Colorado and I'm in Douglas County. And here we have the Douglas County School District, of which I have three children attending. And we have an election coming up this year in November for school board candidates. And as many of you have noticed, a lot of these school board meetings have become pretty contentious. There's a lot of big issues that parents are having problems with and they feel like they're not being heard. And I think a lot of that is happening in Douglas County. I know I've come and given public comment a few times because I finally gotten sick of a few things and decided to step forward. And so today I'm talking to two candidates for the Douglas County School Board. And we have Kristi Williams and Kaylee, is it Winiger?
Winiger.
Winiger, got it.
You're fine.
All right, hi ladies, how are you?
Good, thanks for having us.
You're welcome.
Yep, thank you, doing well.
Good, and you're two out of a four-person slate that's running together. And so you two are running with Becky Myers and Mike Peterson. And so do you all four feel like that you're kind of on the same page with a lot of the issues that are facing the school board?
Absolutely, we are all, we're grassroots efforts. We didn't know each other's coming in, but this was just a coming together of us four who had very similar principles. We want to bring accountability, integrity, transparency to this board, which will ultimately balance out the board. And yeah, you agree with that, Kristi?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's been really nice getting to know the other three over the last, I don't know, it's probably only been two months since we've even come in contact with the four of us. And just seeing that our principles align, that we are advocates for kids first, just all the important things.
Which reminds-
Yeah, we're all parents, and I, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, don't you go ahead, Kaylee.
I just wanted to add that we're all parents and we're not political candidates at all. So we're being very trained on that. We need to make sure to get our website out there. So I wanted to reemphasize to go to our website at vote4kidsfirst.com. And it's the number four, so vote number4kidsfirst.com.
Vote4kidsfirst.com with the number four. All right, that was the question I was about to ask you because I wanted-
Oh, see, you know.
Just in case I neglected to ask you, I'm glad you brought, remind me to bring it up again at the end of our podcast. Because this is a really important election. So many of us that have been to some of these meetings have felt very frustrated. And so it feels good to know that in November we have another way to make our voices heard. So the first thing I wanted to ask you both is, why are you running for this office? And let's start with Kristi.
Sure, so I, just a little bit of background, only because that kind of segues into your question. But I have three kids in the district. I have a first grader, a fifth grader, and a seventh grader who attend American Academy. I've been very involved at the school level. I joined PTO, I did that for three years. I became PTO president. And then from there, I joined the School Accountability Committee. And then from there, I actually joined the District Accountability Committee. So I've been watching, I'm going into my second year there. But even before that, I was a liaison from the School Accountability Committee to the District Accountability Committee. And so I learned a lot, just watching how everything unfolds, how things are run. And I just, especially over the last year, have just seen that we need courageous leadership. We need leadership that we're going to put the kids at our central, as a central focus of our decisions, that all of our decisions should be around that and not based on where we're getting yelled at the loudest, right? Like that we're making hard decisions, we're sticking to that and we're not wavering. So that's, that's just where I've seen a huge need. And I thought, you know, I'm in the thick of it. I have kids that are going to be in the district for another 12 years. And I want to, I want to help make a difference.
Awesome, we're going to come back to that help because you are on one of the committees. And a lot of us out here don't really know what those advisory committees are and how they interact with the school board and the superintendent. And so that's something I want to come back to later when we get into the more of the mechanics of what it takes to be a school board member. All right, so Kaylee, why did you, why are you running?
Yeah, so my background is I grew up in Douglas County and attended public schools here. And I also had a mother who was a teacher in Douglas County and is still a teacher. And then I also went to college with an accounting degree. So that gives me a very good experience with budgets and what to look for. And then just recently, the big why I'm running is I have a daughter who's just turned five and she's going to be entering kindergarten at her local public neighborhood school. And so that got me starting to pay attention to the school board. And especially this last year, having friends who were in school and having a lot of their choice taken away when it came to in-person learning and masks. And now they're afraid vaccines might be another choice being taken away. So just seeing the current board seems really one-sided and not very representative of people like me. And when I look and watch the meetings, I'm very much feeling that way. And so I also feel like a lot of decisions may have been fear-based and emotional knee-jerk reactions rather than principled and balanced. And so I hope to bring that. And I know the other three candidates for sure will bring that, Becky and Kristi and Mike, so that's why I'm running.
Awesome, thank you. And when you take your daughter to kindergarten, just be ready to go home and cry. Because I remember, is she your only child or just your oldest? Your only?
My only.
Yeah, it's pretty hard. I was just recalling the other day what it was like when I took my youngest to kindergarten for the first day. And I had to leave there and quickly go sit in my car because I knew I was going to lose it. Because this little child that you've been hanging out with all this time is now not going to be with you all the time. It's going to be hard. But I think it'll be helpful that you're involved in knowing what's going on in your schools if you're a school board member. So that'll, that'll be some help. But I also kudos to both of you for doing this because so many of us just sit back and talk about it. And you're actually putting your money where your mouth is and you're going to get right involved. So, all right, next question. And this is where I want to talk a little bit about the mechanics of, what is the role of the school board? How does it work with the superintendent and these committees? Because I'm always confused, like who should I be sending my angry emails to? You know, when they didn't want to go back to school in person, I was like, ah, you know, and I wanted to, I really wanted to email them, but I thought, I don't know who I'm supposed to be emailing that's making this decision.
Yeah, so, so the Board of Education, at least in Douglas County, is made up, we have seven members on the board. Their primary function is to, A, hire and oversee the superintendent. So that's one of theirs. They are also to oversee budget and then also policies and kind of, that can be really any policy. And then on top of that, just the education, the educational philosophy that the district chooses. So those, that's where the board stands. It's been, it's been a little bit of messy waters. It's been a little murky, like you said, to know who you're supposed to talk to. Because there's, there's, there's not really a clear picture on that because usually it should be the superintendent that you should be able to contact and they should be able to make decisions. And I think that's something that we want to do is to empower our superintendent to make those hard decisions, give him or her, whoever it is, the freedom to, to make those decisions. And so that, I mean, that's ultimately the, the role of the Board of Education is to oversee the superintendent. They're, they're supposed to do that. And the superintendent is, is and should be able to make those sorts of critical decisions when it comes to kids coming back to school. Obviously with, with the board saying yes or no. But most of the time, if you trust your superintendent, you're going to, you know, let them make those decisions that are kid-center-based decisions.
So what if superintendent is not doing that? What if, what if, see, this is what I'm curious about. If you have seven of you, there's one superintendent and let's say three or four of you are not in agreement with what the superintendent is doing, you can override what he or she has done?
Yes, that's true.
Okay.
Yes.
So hopefully he or she is doing the right thing. But if not, I mean, you can say, no, we're going to reverse that decision.
Yeah, you can. In this case, there's been some of the opposite happening. I think, you know, the superintendent has said, let's go back to school. Let's get the kids back in. And the board has, you know, said, no, we're not quite ready and pulled it back. So the board can do either. But if you trust your superintendent and you have somebody that's good, good there, then hopefully you don't have to do that as a board. I mean, that's, that's the goal, is that there's not, you know, you're not butting heads and that you're working together. You're, you know, on the same page.
Right, so that, that raises another question then. You hire the superintendent, does that mean that you can fire the superintendent? Yeah, Kaylee's saying yes, you're both missing. We lost the superintendent recently, didn't we? Because we had, our current superintendent was an interim superintendent before it was made permanent, right? So was the last superintendent let go?
Which one are you talking about? Are you talking about the one who was interim and let go? Or the one who was actually?
Oh, I don't know, that's a good question. I didn't go that far back, so I don't really know the history. I guess I don't really need to know the history other than to know that if a superintendent's not doing a good job, they can be removed.
I don't, I think the last ones that have, actually I think all of them who have left have actually stepped back on their own. Although maybe it could have been, you know, like pressure and they resigned to make it look better.
They were, they were butting heads with the school board and so left, do you think, or?
Um, well, the one that most, one that most recently, the interim that most recently resigned was because there's a DUI. And so he resigned. And then the one before that, the one we had for a little longer, he had some, what would you call them? Like some toxic workplace issues going on.
I remember, I didn't realize there was one in between him and the current ones.
Yeah, it was, it was quick, it was quick.
It was like literally two days, like it might have even been, yeah, it was very fast. They announced him and then he, he pulled out because everybody had found out that he had a DUI on his record.
Wow, well, that just goes to show you how important it is to have a solid school board that can get through all that kind of thing and that are mostly on the same page. Because otherwise I can see how it'd be difficult to agree on who to hire. And also you don't want a constant butting of heads between the board and the superintendent.
Yeah, and something I just want to add to that is the board is supposed to be the representation of the community, right? So if you have a board that represents your community, then your superintendent won't feel like he's playing tug-of-war between the board and the community. And I think that's currently what's going on with our superintendent is the board's telling him one thing, the community's saying something different. So there's definitely something that needs to change there.
Yeah, that's, that's a good, that's good to know. It's got to be tough to be a superintendent in a situation like that.
It's not easy.
No, so then how does, how does it work with the advisory committees? Are these just parents or community members that are researching things for the school board?
Yeah, most of them are made up of all of the above. So they're made up of teachers, they're made up of parents and community members. So for instance, I'm on the District Accountability Committee, as I said. And our role is to just advise the board on pretty much most everything. So just about what their priorities for the year should be, what their focus should be on. And then also, you know, we, we talk about the improvement plan for the districts every year. And we talk about the kids, most recently, coming back to school. What's that going to look like? How are we going to recover from, you know, everything? We talk about mental health. I mean, we talk about everything in there and we advise the board with our opinions, essentially.
All right, that's one of the questions that one of my friends asked me when I told her I was doing this episode. She said, what are the plans for bringing everyone up to where they should be after, you know, all of the school that was done virtually? And I know that there was summers, some summer schools. I sat in on one of the meetings where they talked about that. Do you, either of you have anything else to say about that?
I think we just need to be gentle with kids and with teachers on coming back. And yeah, we want to get our academics back on board, but we also, I think, need to have an understanding of, this was a tough year for teachers and students. And just, you know, take that into consideration and hope to get it back to where there's constant in-person learning so we don't have the chaos that we had last year.
Excellent.
Yeah, I think it's going to take a lot of working with the teachers in particular of figuring out like, what do they think that we should do, right? Like, how are we going to fill that academic gap? I'm not the professional when it comes to that. And so I would want to hear from the professionals, right? The people that know, the people that are standing in front of our kids. And, and how do they, how do they see the best route? And go from there.
Right, yeah, and also I should mention that I substituted this last semester.
Fun.
And you know what, I have to say, I was very frustrated that parents were not allowed into the schools. I'm sure that you both, well, Kaylee's not there yet. But Kristi, you probably felt this too, where it was like, you're kidding, I'm not allowed to come into my child's school? That was very disturbing. But I subbed, you know, in all sorts of schools, all different grades. So I saw what it was like in there. It felt like I was in the trenches. It was a very difficult year and I don't want to do it again. But I think partly it was because of the masking and the social distancing. It was, you know, and my hearing's not great. And I can just imagine some of the other teachers that have the same issue. So already you don't hear great. And then there's this mask in the way, and you're like, and these kids talk so softly. And you're like, I, you know, get here, come closer because I can't understand you. But I did see some of the things that went on in the schools. And so I have a special view of how some of these policies worked with masking and the social distancing. Also, I saw something interesting that I may want to bring up with my, Crestles were my, I'm going to have two middle schoolers this year. And when I subbed there one day, and I was, I'm going to bring it up now. Go ahead. I went to the special ed, I was assigned to the special ed class and I went up there and it was a boondoggle because they weren't having class, they were testing. And so the admin lady in the office said, well, go do dishes in HomeX. I did dishes in HomeX. But anyway, when I came back to the special ed room, they, they had a little picture on the wall. And it was one of those little signs that says, we believe. And it basically lists out the planks of the Democrat Party. And I was very, very annoyed because, well, I have a daughter that's, she's got an IEP, so she's probably going to be in this classroom. And I haven't had a chance to talk to that. That principal's now stepped down and he's doing something for the school board, I guess, something with special ed. But I needed a chance to get in there and talk to the principal because how is that okay? That's basically indoctrination to have something. I could see if you're in a social studies class and you have that, plus you had another opposing viewpoint and you talked about. These are two of the, you know, this is the plank of Democrat Party, this is the plank of the Republican Party. And then there's, this is the libertarians or whatever. And you balanced it out and you talked about it. But it was just there and it bothered me because it was in special ed, number one, these are very impressionable children. And number two, it was completely one-sided. And why is it in the school, why is it in the special ed room? So I was going to bring that up at a school board meeting. Now I've brought it up. But that's the kind of thing that we don't need to see in the school and the kind of thing that makes a lot of us parents want to become super involved. Because I would never have known that had I not been subbing that day in that particular classroom, you know, and some of the other things. But that takes me to some of the other questions that we were, that I kind of brought up about the COVID restrictions. And right now, the last time I checked, and it seems like everyone's checking every day to see what's going to happen. Because the superintendent sent out an email a month ago saying, we're not going to mask, we're going to try and go back to pre-COVID time and not mask up and not social distance and try and be as normal as possible. And then the CDC comes out, you know, and one of my favorite sayings on Facebook this year that I made up was that the CDC does more for homeschool than Obama did for gun sales. Because I, my opinion, just I'll put it right out there, is that if they're requiring masks in school or vaccines, my kids are going to homeschool. They're, we're not doing it, I'm not doing it. I, I hated the masks in the first place and I saw in the school how terrible. Well, not only could you not communicate well, but you couldn't see what the kids were feeling. You couldn't see their emotions, you know, they couldn't read my emotions. And so there was like this disconnect between teacher and student. And that was really hard. And then the other thing is that, you know, they were coming down constantly. Like, there's no way these things were effective, right? They were touching them constantly. They came down for snacks, which they have to, obviously. They come down to the playground, which I was grateful for. But there's no way these things were effective. It was almost like a pacifier, this will make you feel better if you put this on. And so this, this email that the superintendent said, no masks and not requiring vaccinations. And then we hear rumors that the CDC is saying you need to be in masks still in school. And so we're, you know, there's all of us in Douglas County are like, well, what's going to happen? Is the superintendent going to go back on that? Because we know some of the school board members are for that. So I want to know where you two stand on masking, social distancing, and vaccines in school.
Sure, I'll go first. I just want to reemphasize that I believe that parents are the ultimate authority in our children's lives. And as far as masks go, there's no scientific evidence that masking children is effective. And even if it is effective, children have low disease risk and do not transmit much. So the fact that they think they can force that choice on parents to make is what I see as wrong. I don't want to necessarily ban them because then again, that's taking away choice for those parents who do see that as effective. But the, if they're going to try to bring science into why we need to put masks on kids, I think that's absolutely bogus and there's no way I would ever push for that. With vaccines, it's the same thing. I think it's unethical to force vaccines. And I obviously, I don't want to be on those either. I want to give the choice to parents. So that's where I stand on those.
What about the social distancing and the other restrictions?
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary anymore. I mean, look at this past summer, we-
It was kind of a joke too, as well, as long as, as well as the masking. It was so funny because in the classroom, I would, these teachers would leave me these really long lists of how, what I'm supposed to do with the kids, right? And one, I remember one of them said, when they're eating their snacks, they need to be up at their tables, which are these big tables, apart from each other when they're eating snacks, right? Because they don't have their mask on. And I'm like, okay, so I always followed the guidance, but then we would go out onto the playground and the kids are hugging on each other, pushing, I mean, it was just so funny. I just thought, this was so ridiculous. If parents could be at the schools to see how unrealistic it is, they would not want it, they just wouldn't, so.
Yeah, and plus we want those kids playing like that. Like, we want kids to be kids.
And I, confession, I never once told a kid to put their mask back on. I just thought it was wrong and I was not going to be that teacher, so.
I know a few teachers who are just like that, like you.
Yeah, because you know what, I talked to a few too and I won't name. And when, as soon as I would say a few words and they knew where I stood, we would have a nice little session because they were on the same page. So not all these teachers want these restrictions either. A lot of them focus like we do. So are you on the same page, Kristi?
Yeah, so I mean, just from a personal experience, I have three kids at a charter school. And our charter school was open every single day since the beginning of the school year. And how our charter school operated was to just follow what the mandates were. So the things that the governor came down and said, like, sorry, kids 11 and older have to wear a mask. I mean, they, they can't get around and neither can the school district. You can't get around, unfortunately, those sorts of mandates. But what the board can do is they can be advocating against all of that at Tri-County, at the CDPHE, at the state. And, and that's what we should be doing as a board is we should be advocating against things that aren't, that aren't working and that we don't agree with. So unfortunately, we have to follow what the law says. Like, you know, we can't, we don't get to choose that stuff. But what we can do is figure out how to make it work within the law. So for instance, at my kid's school, the kids 10 and under didn't have to wear masks. So two of my kids ran around all day without their masks on. But those parents that chose to send their kids with masks that were five and six and, you know, 10 or eight or whatever, they wore masks and that's okay. And we just have to respect, you know, parent choice and medical freedom, like to do what's best for your family. And I, I only know my family the best, right? Like, you know your family the best and I have to trust as, you know, a person that, as a mom, that you're going to do what's best for your family. And we just need, we need to get back to just respecting everybody for whatever their choices.
Yeah, I agree. That's, that's been one of the most frustrating things is that it's, the choice has been taken away from us. And why can't those, that parents that want to mask their kids, why can't they be fine with just masking their kids and letting the rest of us make our decision for our, and because I don't go around saying, don't take the vaccine, don't take the, or don't wear masks. I say, I'm not going to do those things. My kids aren't going to do those things, not you should or shouldn't. That's up to you. Yeah, that was one of the things that was annoying too was that these, a lot of these schools, even though the law was 10 and under didn't have to wear them, they were requiring them anyway. I mean, these little kindergartners running around with masks on. Ah, it triggers me so badly. Especially now when I'm in public and I'm at Target or something and I see families with little kids with masks. I just want to go, did you not get the memo?
Yeah.
But it's, I would never say anything to them because that's their choice.
Right, and it was also frustrating because Douglas County has a county outside the school district opted out of the mask mandate. And then our school district just sat back and acted like, oh, we're not going to try to do that too. So it just felt like very lousy fair type of ruling on when it came to masks.
Yes, a lot of us felt that way. Yes, a lot of us felt that way. Well, and I want to go ahead and make a pitch to all the parents out there that we can't put all, put everything on the school board. If we feel strongly enough about it, we need to speak up about it. And I, I don't know how you two would feel about this, but I'm telling parents, if, if the school board doesn't want to do the right thing, you tell them you're going to pull your kids out. And then you pull your kids out if you have to, because that's money out of the pocket of the school district. And so they will listen to money. They're not going to listen to anything else. Although I really love charter schools too. I actually have my kids on a waiting list for a charter school just because if this kind of thing keeps happening, I can't, I can't do it, you know?
Yeah, I, you know, it's, it's so hard. This, this school district truly has amazing schools. They do. They have amazing schools. We have great, awesome teachers. And I hate to see people pulling their kids out of school, out of the school district. I hate it. With every fiber of my being, I mean, whether I'm at a charter or not, I mean, I, we chose that eight years ago. That was just what fit best for our family. But we have great neighborhood schools, and, and I, I don't want people to leave the district. I want people to stay. I mean, yeah, that, it, it just, it truly is sad to, to, to watch what's happening. So.
I hate it too. I really don't want to homeschool. I would rather do that than send my kids back in masks. And I'm not vaccinating them. So it is what it is. All right, so that takes me to the next really big topic that's hot in school board meetings across the country right now. And that is the teaching of the critical race theory in one name or another. Because you see it talked about as equity or racial justice or social justice. I mean, there's lots of different ways that it's, it's come at. And I think, you know, people on the right see it one way, and people on the left see it another way. And so there's, I think there's a lot of difficulty in, in knowing what it really means and what it translates to when it's at school. And to me, the problem is when you have what you hear about these classes where kids are told that they are either victims or victimizers because of their race. And that's supposed to make them more aware or whatever. And a lot of us out here have a real problem with any, any philosophy where someone's meant to feel bad for the way they were born. And so I want to know where you both stand on it, what, and what you see going on in the current school district with it. Because I keep hearing that, oh, you know, I see a superintendent email that says, we're not going to have a critical race theory in any of our, what does it say? I can't remember the word he used, but any of our courses or any of our curriculum, I think. But then I see other people on Facebook saying, oh, but it is in there. And so I want to know what you guys think about it and what your plans are as far as making sure it's not in there or if you're okay with it.
Yeah, so I'll start. Anything that shames one person for any reason, race, gender, religion, sexual preference, I mean, whatever it is, is not okay. And it should not be anywhere near our kids. I mean, we should be teaching our kids to be kind to everybody. And what, what I think a lot of parents were upset about was the Gemini group that the school hired to come in. And it, it did talk about the oppressors and the oppressed. And, you know, it really separated people. It was very divisive. And anything that's divisive is, it's just not good. That's not, that's not where we need to be focusing. I mean, ultimately, anything that takes away from academics is bad, right? Like, we need to be focusing on academics. But, you know, yeah, just, we need to be unifying. We need to be bringing our kids together, teaching respect, all of those things. I mean, I think, I, I don't think there's any person out there that would disagree with that. I mean, we want our kids to be kind to one another. But that shouldn't be based upon anything. Just be kind, right? So that's it.
I kind of don't understand why that has gone by the wayside. Well, I should say, couldn't say that. I don't know why people are buying into it. I, I kind of know where it's coming from. I don't know why people are buying into that philosophy, why it's not okay to, to judge people on the content of their character instead of the color of their skin. Like, that's what I was raised with, you know, like, to be colorblind. What's wrong with that? Like, right now you go to the schools and you see kids of all ethnicities just playing. And, and just like, my kids don't know black from white. I mean, it's not a distinction that they care about making. It's just not. And so to me, if you put this sort of thing in place in a school, all of a sudden it's like, oh, look, kids, I want you to pay attention to this now. You're sitting next to someone who's skinned out, the skin color is different from you. And so they're bad, or they're inherently bad, or they're inherently good because of that. And then all of a sudden, these kids who are playing with each other just fine feel that, like you said, Chrissy, divisive. Like, they're divided all of a sudden into races. And why on earth would you want to do that to someone? Where, where do you stand on that, Kaylee?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what you said, actually, probably everything you said. But that's another reason why I also wanted to run is I looked at the district's policies and I saw the word equity a lot in there. And, you know, to some people that can be harmless, but then there's people who were, will interpret that word wrong. And look, that's exactly what happened. We got Gemini group teaching our teachers that intent doesn't matter. And it's opportu, it's not opportunities, it's outcomes that matter. And that's just wrong. I mean, our Douglas County School District mission is to provide an educational foundation that allows each student to reach his or her individual potential. It's not about your upbringing. We all want to give everyone the opportunity for an education. And that's where you can, the failure potential is your education. That's what's important, you know? And grouping people by race is just going to divide and make things worse. And so, yeah, I, it's too controversial to leave in there. And one of our priorities actually is to align the policy with our community and just make sure that it's not being interpreted, interpreted wrong like it has been recently. So the district can, or the board can try to say that they defined it in the policy how they want, and people are just misinterpreting it. But I mean, obviously something's wrong when you're getting all these people up in arms about it. You can't just like, act like you don't have to do anything about it. So that's what we're definitely concentrating on as a group.
Yeah, but we're, because we as parents are not going away. I mean, if, if we, if my kids come home and tell me that they're learning something like that, oh, there will be hell to pay because it's not going to happen. You know, and that's the other thing, from teaching, I saw how few hours were actually spent on actual education. They're, I mean, I love the specials, they're great, and I love recess, it's all necessary. But you already have so little time to teach them reading, writing, and arithmetic. Why on earth would you want to take any more time away from that on something like this? You know, it's, we've got, we've got to just stick to the basics. And if you need to talk about anything like that, you know, like Chrissy said, be kind. Just be kind to each other. That's, period, right?
Okay.
Um, okay, and then the next question I wanted to ask each of you, and you kind of answered it in previous questions, but what would you like to accomplish in office? And I guess that kind of goes along with how are you, how will you be different than the current, the slate that you're running against? Let's start with you this time, Kaylee.
Sure. Um, us four have a, built these five priorities. And the first one, the most important one, we believe, is to build relationships and establish trust. And obviously, that's important because we want parents to feel at ease that there are people on the board representing their voice. So hopefully, electing us and us proving ourselves, having people hold us accountable will get that trust reestablished. We also want to refocus on academics and closing gaps. And we also want to address any compensation disparities among teachers. I know there's been some progress made, and there can always be more. And then, as we've discussed, we want in-person learning to honor parent expectations, which includes choice on masks and vaccines, and do everything we can to keep schools open. And then the last priority we have is to, like I mentioned, realign the educational equity policy to our community expectations. And, yeah, so we're excited to get started on that. And I know we have a great group that, like we mentioned, are very courageous and, you know, aren't fear-based. And we hope that people entrust us and will vote for us in November on that.
All right, thank you. And you, Christie?
Yeah, so she, I mean, she covered our, our, our big priorities. Another one that I would just mention is that we need a plan for growth. I mean, Douglas County is growing so quickly, and we need more schools. I mean, we, we need all of that stuff, so we, we need to be planning for that as well. So that's the only other thing I would add, but everything else, yeah, it's great.
I looked at the, the history of the school district, and it's amazing the growth year over year in kids coming in. We're at like, what, 69,000 kids right now? Has it been like that?
Well, we lost a lot over the last year. We lost a lot. So I think we're what, down to 64,000?
Oh, wow. We did lose them. I think it was 69 in, I think, 2018. Oh, no, it was 67 in 2018.
Oh, yeah.
Why did we lose them?
Because of COVID. People left to either homeschool or go to private schools.
Yeah, you would think the school board would have learned from that. All right, so in the last few minutes, there were some questions that came in when I put this on Facebook and said I was going to be talking to you both. And one of them asked about how you will handle special education and the way you deal with issues related to that.
Sure. So first, I would say Mike, who's running with us, Mike Peterson, has a special ed, he is a special ed parent. So his daughter has been in special ed. So he is going to be an awesome advocate for all those. I mean, not that the rest of us won't be, we all totally support that, but he's been in the thick of it. He knows what it's like, and he can totally empathize with the parents. So, so that's the first thing I would say. The second thing is, is that we want all parents who go to sit in on an IEP meeting with their, with their students to feel like when they, they've left that they're, they've been heard. And that they, that they feel like the school and their advocates are in their corner, and that they're going to back them up. I mean, that's, I mean, that's ultimately what, what we would want.
Awesome. Yeah, you know what? I have a daughter with an IEP, and I've, I've had so far nothing but good experiences in the schools, except of course during COVID. Because IEP kids do not do well in the virtual environment. They just don't. They need one-on-one. They need to be in person and, and not going on YouTube or whatever, you know, as you're trying to keep an eye on them.
Yes, it's hard.
And then another question was about funding. Someone wanted to know about the bond money that was yet to be spent and whether or not you would promise to stick with what voters were told, i.e. tier one and tier two projects from the original plan and not let admin folks make changes based on whims. And I don't even know what all that means.
Well, yeah, so there was a bond passed recently. And bonds for schools are the only way that we can get any capital work done to our building. So that means any new builds, any new schools we need, any upgrades to the buildings that we need. So it's really, really important that money's spent well because there's nowhere else that money can come from, except through bonds that we pass. So I get their concern because that's a big deal if it's not being spent wisely. So, and to answer their question is, I mean, I would hope that it's being spent as voters were told it was going to be spent. I'm not totally sure on the details with the tier one and tier two. I haven't honestly looked at that. But I would also hope that we want to change it on a whim. I'm sure things come up where, you know, you start working on something and you find out, oh, it actually needs this much work or something, you know? So I would hope that those are decisions that are well thought out. And I would like to hear all that, for sure, as a board member, on how the bond money's being spent, how it's going. And I would, I would definitely be transparent about that to voters so that they have confidence on voting on new bond. Because with this new growth that's coming, we're potentially going to need more, another bond to build more schools and to upgrade any schools that are deteriorating. So.
All right, thank you. Well, you both have been wonderful. I'm, I'm very pleased that the answers that I'm hearing to these questions. And unless something crazy happens, I will be voting for both of you. And.
Well, thanks.
You're welcome. Oh, I, it's nice to hear someone that's on the same page with me. And I know a lot, a lot, a lot of the other, I'm guessing the majority of the rest of the parents. So tell us again where we can find you, what your website is.
Our web site is vote, the number four, so vote4kids.com. And I'm sorry, oh gosh, vote4kidsfirst.com. See, I'm so bad at this. Okay. Vote4kidsfirst.com. And kidsfirst.com.
And it's the number four.
And then, yeah, and we're so excited, and we need a lot of help. So any, you know, anybody who wants to volunteer, please, you know, jump on there, volunteer. We also are going to need funds. So anybody who can, who can donate, you know, every penny counts. So you can, you can find all of our bios on that website. You can find links to all sorts of stuff. So please go to vote4kidsfirst.com.
Yeah, funding helps get our message out because school board elections are usually very low voter turnout. They're on off-election years, so we may be the only thing on the ballot. So a lot of people just, you know, throw it away. But this election is very, very important, and every vote counts. So please go out there once you get your ballot and make sure you vote.
Well, and I, I know in Douglas County, the, the other slate was putting their names on the back of cars. Is that, are you guys planning on doing anything like that, or is that their, their playbook?
Well, I think we, we might come up with some of our own tricks.
All right.
So that's what I would say.
All right. Well, thank you again. I will definitely be promoting you on my Facebook page. And I'm going to link to the vote4kidsfirst.com in the show notes of this program. And again, we just appreciate all that you're doing, and, and I hope you both get in. All for good. All right. Thank you, ladies.
Yes, thanks so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for listening to Annette Online: Liberty and Happiness. Where freedom lovers gather.